The terrible new acronym born out of Israel’s genocidal assault on the Palestinian population in Gaza. There is an urgent need for provisional measures to prevent imminent irreparable prejudice to the rights at issue in this case. There could not be a clearer or more compelling case. In the words of the Commissioner General of the United Nations Relief and Works Agency, there must be an end to the decimation of Gaza and of its people. Turning to the court’s case law, as the court has recently reaffirmed, and I quote: “The condition of urgency is met when acts susceptible of causing irreparable prejudice can occur at any moment before the court makes a final decision on the case.” That is precisely the situation here. Any of those matters to which I have referred can and are occurring at any moment. United Nations Security Council resolutions demanding, quote, “the immediate, safe, unhindered delivery of humanitarian assistance at scale throughout Gaza and full, rapid, safe and unhindered humanitarian access,” end quote, remain unimplemented. United Nations General Assembly resolutions calling for a humanitarian ceasefire have been ignored. The situation could not be more urgent. Since these proceedings were initiated on the 29th of December 2023 alone, an estimated over 1,703 Palestinians have been killed in Gaza and over 3,252 injured. As to the criterion of irreparable prejudice, for decades now, the court has repeatedly found it to be satisfied in situations where serious risks arise to human life or to other fundamental rights. In the cases of Georgia, Russia, and Armenia-Azerbaijan, the court ordered provisional measures, having found a serious risk of irreparable prejudice where hundreds of thousands of people had been forced from their homes. In ordering provisional measures in the latter case, the court noted the context of, I quote, “the longstanding exposure of the population to a situation of vulnerability, including hindrances to the importation of essential goods, causing shortages of food, medicine, and other lifesaving medical supplies.” In Gaza, as you have heard, nearly 2 million people, over 85% of the population, have been repeatedly forced to flee their homes and shelters, not just once or twice, but some three, four, or more times over, into shrinking slivers of land where they continue to be bombed and killed. This is a population that Israel had already made vulnerable through 16 years of military blockade and crippling de-development. Today, Israel’s hindrances to the import of food and essential items have brought Gaza to the brink of famine, with adults, mothers, fathers, grandparents regularly foregoing food for the day so that children can eat at least something. Medicine shortages and the lack of medical treatment, clean water, and electricity are so great that large numbers of Palestinians are dying or are at imminent risk of dying preventable deaths. Cancer and other services have long shut down. Women are undergoing cesarean sections without anaesthetic, in barely functioning hospitals, described as scenes from a horror movie, with many undergoing otherwise unnecessary hysterectomies in an attempt to save their lives. In the Canada-Syria torture case, the court made clear that, I quote, “individuals subject to torture and other acts of cruel, inhuman, or degrading treatment or punishment are at serious risk of irreparable prejudice.” While Palestinians in Gaza are also at risk of such irreparable prejudice, with videos of Palestinian boys and men rounded up and stripped and degraded broadcast to the world, alongside footage of serious bodily harm and accounts of serious mental harm and humiliation. In Qatar, United Arab Emirates, the court considered provisional measures to be justified, having regard to the risk of irreparable prejudice deriving from factors such as people being forced to leave their places of residence without the possibility of return, the psychological distress of temporary or potentially ongoing separation from their families, and the harm associated with students being prevented from taking their exams. If provisional measures were justified there, how could they not be in Gaza, where countless families have been separated, with some family members evacuating under Israeli military orders, and others staying behind at extreme risk to care for the wounded, infirm, and the elderly, where husbands, fathers, and sons are being rounded up and separated from their families, taken to unknown locations for indeterminate periods of time? In the Qatar case, the court issued a provisional order where harm to approximately 150 students was an issue. In Gaza, 625,000 schoolchildren have not attended school for three months, with the United Nations Security Council expressing deep concern, I quote, “that the disruption of access to education has a dramatic impact on children and that conflict has lifelong effects on their physical and mental health.” Almost 90,000 Palestinian university students cannot attend a university in Gaza. Over 60% of schools, almost all universities, and countless bookshops and libraries have been damaged or destroyed, and hundreds of teachers and academics have been killed, including deans of universities and leading Palestinian scholars, obliterating the very prospects for the future education of Gaza’s children and young people. Notably, the court has found provisional measures to be justified in all three cases where they were previously sought in relation to violations of the Genocide Convention. It did so in Bosnia and Serbia in 1993, finding on the basis of evidence that was certainly no more compelling than that presently before the court, that it was sufficient to determine that there was, and I quote, “a grave risk of acts of genocide being committed.” The court found provisional measures to be justified in the Gambia-Myanmar case on the basis of a risk of irreparable prejudice to the Rohingya, subject to, quote, “mass killings as well as beatings, the destruction of villages and homes, denial of access to food, shelter, and other essentials of life.” More recently, in indicating provisional measures in Ukraine-Russia, the court considered that Russia’s military activities had, quote, “resulted in numerous civilian deaths and injuries and caused significant material damage, including the destruction of buildings and infrastructure,” end quote, giving rise to a risk of irreparable prejudice. The court had regard to the fact that, quote, “attacks are ongoing and are creating increasingly difficult living conditions for the civilian population,” end quote, which it considered to be extremely vulnerable. The court also considered the fact that, I quote again, “many persons have no access to the most basic foodstuffs, potable water, electricity, essential medicines, or heating,” and that many were attempting to flee under extremely insecure conditions. This is occurring in Gaza on a much more intensive scale to a besieged, trapped, terrified population that has nowhere safe to go. Lest the contrary be suggested, it is clear from Ukraine-Russia that the fact that the urgent risk of irreparable harm arises in a situation of armed conflict does not undermine, much less preclude, a request for provisional measures. That’s also clear from the court’s other judgments. So in the case of armed activities on the territory of the Congo, for example, the court ordered provisional measures based on its finding that, quote, “persons, assets, and resources present on the territory of the Congo, particularly in the area of conflict, remain extremely vulnerable, and that there was a serious risk that rights at issue in the case may suffer irreparable prejudice.” Similarly, in Costa Rica-Nicaragua, the court indicated provisional measures in part on the basis that the presence of troops in the disputed territory gave rise, I quote, “to a real and present risk of incidents liable to cause irremediable harm in the form of bodily injury or death.” In relation to the Genocide Convention in particular, the court recalled in Gambia-Myanmar that, quote, “state’s parties expressly confirmed their willingness to consider genocide as a crime under international law, which they must prevent and punish independently of the context of peace or of war in which it takes place.” More recently, in the case of Guyana, Venezuela, the court considered that the serious risk of Venezuela, quote, “acquiring and exercising control and administration of the territory in dispute,” end quote, gave rise to a risk of irreparable prejudice to the rights asserted in the case. Similar factors are an issue here, having regard to the territorial ambitions and settlement plans for Gaza being raised by members of the Israeli government, and the relationship of those factors to the very survival of Palestinians in Gaza as such. Similarly, any scaling up by Israel of access of humanitarian leaf to Gaza in response to these proceedings or otherwise would be no answer to South Africa’s request for provisional measures. In the case of Iran-United States, the court found a risk of irreparable harm from the exposure of individuals to danger to health and life caused by restrictions placed on medicines and medical devices, foodstuffs, and other goods required for humanitarian needs. That was notwithstanding the assurances offered by the United States for it to expedite the consideration of humanitarian issues, and notwithstanding the fact that essentials were in any event exempt from the United States sanctions. The court considered that the assurances were, I quote, “not adequate to address fully the humanitarian and safety concerns raised, and that there remained a risk that measures adopted by the United States may entail irreparable consequences.” In Armenia-Azerbaijan, unilateral undertakings to alleviate restrictions alongside the full resumption of humanitarian and commercial deliveries did not defeat a request for the indication of provisional measures. The court was clear that while contributing, quote, “towards mitigating the imminent risk of irreparable prejudice resulting from the military operation,” those developments did not remove the risk entirely. Indeed, in Georgia, Russia, the court made clear that it considers a serious risk to subsist where, quote, “the situation is unstable and could rapidly change.” The court considered, quote, “given the ongoing tension and the absence of an overall settlement to the conflict in this region, populations also remain vulnerable.” Israel continues to deny that it is responsible for the humanitarian crisis it has created, even as Gaza starves. The aid it has belatedly begun to allow in is wholly inadequate and does not come anywhere close to the average 500 trucks being permitted daily before October 2023, even under the blockade. Any unilateral undertakings Israel might seek to give about future aid would not remove the risk of irreparable prejudice, not least considering Israel’s past and current conduct towards the Palestinian people, including the 16 years of brutal siege on Gaza. In any event, as the United Nations Secretary General has made absolutely clear, it is a mistake to measure, I quote, “the effectiveness of the humanitarian operation in Gaza based on the number of trucks allowed in.” As he stressed, I quote, “The real problem is that the way Israel is conducting this offensive means that the conditions for the effective delivery of humanitarian aid no longer exist. That would require security, staff who can work in safety, logistical capacity, and the resumption of commercial activity. It requires electricity and steady communications. All of these remain absent.” Indeed, only shortly after Israel opened the Karem Shalom crossing to goods in late December 2023, it was struck in a drone attack, killing five Palestinians and leading to another temporary closure. Nowhere and nobody is safe. As the United Nations Secretary General and all its chiefs have made clear, without a halt to Israel’s military operations, crossings, aid convoys, and humanitarian workers, like everyone and everything else in Gaza, remain at imminent risk of further irreparable prejudice. An unprecedented 148 United Nations staff have been killed to date. Without a halt to Israel’s military activity in Gaza, there will be no end to the extreme situation facing Palestinian civilians. Madam President, Members of the Court, if the indication of provisional measures was justified on the facts in those cases I have cited, how could it not be here, in a situation of much greater severity where the imminent risk of irreparable harm is so much greater? How could they not be justified in a situation that humanitarian veterans from crises spanning as far back as the Killing Fields of Cambodia, people who, in the words of the United Nations Secretary General, have seen everything? If they say it is so utterly unprecedented that they are out of words to describe it? It would be a complete departure from the long and established line of jurisprudence that this court has firmly established and recently reconfirmed, for the court not to order provisional measures in this case. The imminent risk of death, harm, and destruction that Palestinians in Gaza face today and that they risk every day during the pendency of these proceedings, on any view justifies, indeed compels, the indication of provisional measures. Some might say that the very reputation of international law, its ability and willingness to bind and to protect all peoples equally, hangs in the balance. But the Genocide Convention is about much more than legal precedent. It is also fundamentally about the confirmation and endorsement of elementary principles of morality. The court recalled the 1946 General Assembly resolution on the crime of genocide, which made clear that, I quote, “genocide is a denial of the right of existence of entire human groups, as homicide is the denial of the right to live of individual human beings. Such denial of the right of existence shocks the conscience of mankind, results in great losses to humanity in the form of cultural and other contributions represented by these human groups, and is contrary to moral law and to the spirit and aims of the United Nations.” Notwithstanding the Genocide Convention’s recognition of the need to rid the world of the odious scourge of genocide, the international community has repeatedly failed. It failed the people of Rwanda; it had failed the Bosnian people and their Rohingya, prompting this court to take action. It failed again by ignoring the early warnings of the grave risk of genocide to the Palestinian people, sounded by international experts since 19th of October of last year. The international community continues to fail the Palestinian people, despite the overt, dehumanizing, genocidal rhetoric by Israeli governmental and military officials matched by the Israeli army’s actions on the ground. Despite the horror of the genocide against the Palestinian people being livestreamed from Gaza to our mobile phones, computers, and television screens, the first genocide in history where its victims are broadcasting their own destruction in real time, in the desperate, so far vain hope that the world might do something. Gaza represents nothing short of a moral failure, as described by the universally circumspect International Committee of the Red Cross. As underscored by United Nations chiefs, that failure has, I quote, “repercussions not just for the people of Gaza, but for the generations to come who will never forget these over 90 days of hell and assaults on the most basic precepts of humanity.” As stated by a United Nations spokesperson in Gaza last week, at the site of a hospital clearly marked with a symbol of the red present, where five Palestinians, including a five-day-old baby, had just been killed. The world should be absolutely horrified. The world should be absolutely outraged. There is no safe space in Gaza, and the world should be ashamed. Madam President, Members of the Court, in conclusion, I share with you two photographs. The first is of a whiteboard at a hospital in northern Gaza, one of the many Palestinian hospitals targeted, besieged, and bombed by Israel over the course of the past three brutal months. The whiteboard is wiped clean of no longer possible surgical cases, leaving only a handwritten message by a Médecins Sans Frontières doctor which reads, “We did what we could. Remember us.” The second photograph is of the same whiteboard after an Israeli strike on the hospital on the 21st of November that killed the author of the message, Dr Mahmoud Abu Nugeila, along with two of his colleagues. Just over a month later, in a powerful sermon delivered from a church in Bethlehem on Christmas Day, the same day Israel had killed 250 Palestinians, including at least 86 people, many from the same family massacred in a single strike on Magazi refugee camp, Palestinian pastor Munther Isak addressed his congregation and the world, and he said, and I quote, “Gaza as we know it no longer exists. This is an annihilation. This is a genocide. We will rise. We will stand up again from the midst of destruction, as we have always done as Palestinians, though this is by far maybe the biggest blow we have received.” But he said, “No apologies will be accepted after the genocide. What has been done has been done. I want you to look in the mirror and ask, where was I when Gaza was going through a genocide?” South Africa is here before this court, in the Peace Palace. It has done what it could. It is doing what it can by initiating these proceedings, by seeking interim measures against itself as well as against Israel. South Africa now respectfully and humbly calls on this honourable court to do what is in its power to do, to indicate the provisional measures that are so urgently required to prevent further irreparable harm to the Palestinian people in Gaza, whose hopes, including for their very survival, are now vested in this court.
Madam President, Members of the Court, I should like to thank you for your kind attention. I ask that you call Professor Lowe KC to the podium now to describe the provisional measures sought by South Africa on behalf of the Palestinian people.
I thank Ms Negraldi, and I now invite Professor Von Lowe to address the court. You have the floor, Professor.
Madam President, Members of the Court, it’s a privilege to appear before you and an honour to do so on behalf of the Republic of South Africa. This case is brought under Article IX of the Genocide Convention, which entitles any contracting party to the convention to submit to the court disputes relating to the interpretation, application, or fulfillment of the convention. The court does not at this stage have to determine whether or not Israel has or has not acted contrary to its obligations under the Genocide Convention. That can only be done at the merits stage. It’s concerned now only with the question of what provisional measures are required pending the court’s final decision on the merits. The court’s jurisprudence points to five requirements for the ordering of provisional measures. The first is that there should be prima facie jurisdiction, and that was addressed by Professor Dugard. The second is that there should be a link between the measures requested and the rights underlying the main claim. This requirement is plainly satisfied. The measures request an order that Israel does not violate the very rights secured by the Genocide Convention as set out in South Africa’s application. The third is the plausibility of the rights that are claimed. Professor Duplessis explained that this is clearly satisfied. The rights claimed are the very core of the convention, notably the right not to be killed or seriously harmed, and the right of the group not to be physically destroyed. Fourth and fifth, there must be a risk of irreparable prejudice capable of arising prior to the final determination of the dispute, and there must be urgency. Ms Negraldi addressed those points. Israel has, for over three months, been mounting a continuous siege and bombardment of Gaza of a ferocity and duration that can only be seen as an attempt to destroy Gaza and its citizens, and it is publicly asserting that it will continue to do so. You are aware of the scale of the death and the scale of the destruction, and it is continuing at this very minute. The court has said that, quote, “a state’s obligation to prevent genocide and the corresponding duty to act arise at the instant that the state learns of, or should normally have learned of, the existence of a serious risk that genocide will be committed. From that moment onwards, if a state has available to it means likely to have a deterrent effect on those suspected of preparing genocide or reasonably suspected of harboring specific intent, it is under a duty to make such use of those means as the circumstances permit.” And that is what South Africa has done by making this application. In cases such as La Grande, Avena, Jodav, this court has exercised its power to order provisional measures, having regard to the impact not only of provisional measures on the state’s parties to a case, but also to the impact on the individuals directly affected and their rights. It has issued orders to restrain states from killing individuals in a manner alleged to violate international law, and that is what South Africa is requesting, after more than 23,000 individuals have already been killed in the siege and bombardment of Gaza, the overwhelming majority of them innocent men, women, and children. The court also issued orders to safeguard the integrity of its proceedings. The court also issued orders to safeguard the integrity of its proceedings and the efficacy of its final ruling. In the Bosnia genocide case, for example, you ordered that the parties, quote, "Not take any action and ensure that no action is taken which may aggravate or extend the existing dispute over the prevention or punishment of the crime of genocide or render it more difficult of solution," end quote. Without such non-aggravation orders, there is a real risk that a respondent will rush to complete its unlawful conduct before the court's final ruling, thus rendering the ruling and the court an irrelevance. Well, South Africa has kept its application in this case within the scope of the convention. First, some will ask why South Africa does not seek any court order against Hamas. This case concerns Israel's actions in Gaza, which is territory that, three weeks ago, in Resolution 2720, the UN Security Council stressed is, quote, "an integral part of the territory occupied in 1967," end quote, by Israel. As the court will understand, Hamas is not a state and cannot be a party to the Genocide Convention and cannot be a party to these proceedings. There are other bodies and processes that can address the questions of steps to be taken in respect of past atrocities and against other actors, and they are no doubt considering what they should do. But as a matter of law, under the convention, South Africa cannot request an order from this court against Hamas. Secondly, South Africa understands that not all violence constitutes genocide. Acts of ethnic cleansing, collective punishment, the targeting of civilians, attacks on hospitals, and other war crimes are all unlawful. But they do not always violate the Genocide Convention. Genocide requires an intent to destroy in whole or in part a national, ethnical, racial, or religious group. But the fact that what Israel is doing in Gaza may also constitute war crimes or crimes against humanity is no defence and no bar to a charge of genocide. South Africa has set out its request for relief in paragraph 111 of its application and its request for provisional measures in paragraph 144. The reasoning behind the requests is pragmatic. The first two paragraphs of the provisional measures request call for the suspension of Israel's military operations in and against Gaza. Israel's continuing occupation, operation in Gaza since the 7th of October attack is the focus of this case. Minister Lamola has recalled the fact that South Africa has condemned the 7th of October attack. Israel says that Palestine and Palestinians are not its target and that its aim is to destroy Hamas. But months of continuous bombing, flattening entire residential blocks and cutting off food and water and electricity and communications to an entire population cannot credibly be argued to be a manhunt for members of Hamas. It is an indiscriminate attack, killing, maiming, and terrorizing the entire population of Gaza with no regard to questions of innocence or guilt, obliterating the homes and cities in which they live, and destroying any practical possibility of their return to make their homes amidst the rubble. Israel's actions both attack Palestinians in Gaza directly and also prevents humanitarian relief reaching them. Palestinians face death from continuing bombardments and shootings and death from starvation and disease, which is even more indiscriminate, but usually slower. In recent days, the United States has said again that far too many civilians are being killed. And the UN Secretary General and the UN Under-Secretary for Humanitarian Affairs and the Commissioner General of the UN Relief and Works Agency have asserted that it is imperative to halt military operations in order to enable the effective delivery of humanitarian relief. And that is why South Africa has requested an order for the immediate suspension of Israel's military operations in and against Gaza. It is the only way to secure the humanitarian response and avoid yet more unnecessary death and destruction. There is a point to emphasise. It's no use Israel saying that it does whatever it can to minimize the deaths of innocent men, women, and children. The use of 2,000-pound bunker-busting bombs and dumb bombs in residential areas and the relentless bombardment of Gaza and even of so-called "safe" areas to which Palestinians have been directed by Israel tell another story. But that is not the only point. It's not just a question of scale and of indiscriminate killing. It's also a question of intention. If any military operation, no matter how carefully it's carried out, is carried out pursuant to an intention to destroy a people in whole or in part, it violates the Genocide Convention, and it must stop. And that is why all military operations capable of violating the Genocide Convention must cease. The third request is for an order that both Israel and South Africa, in accordance with their obligations under the Genocide Convention in relation to the Palestinian people, take all reasonable measures to prevent genocide. The fourth and fifth measures then spell out these general obligations in terms of the specific instances of offences listed in Articles One, Two, and Three of the convention. The sixth requested measure addresses the fact that, aside from its own acts, the government of Israel is legally bound to prevent and punish others who engage in, or incite, or actively support conduct that violates the Genocide Convention. Until the reported intervention of the Attorney General 36 hours ago, Israeli authorities appear to have done practically nothing to stop the flow of genocidal rhetoric, including statements emanating from the ranks of public officials. Indeed, the toleration, even normalization of such incitement has become a matter of concern within Israel itself, and that is why this measure is sought. This case is important. Lives are at stake. Israel's credibility and reputation are at stake. Yet evidence that could determine whether or not particular acts violate the Genocide Convention is being lost or destroyed, while fact-finders and foreign journalists are unable to report freely from Gaza. Hence, the seventh request, which is for an order directing the preservation of evidence. And finally, South Africa asks that the court require specific reports from Israel on what it is doing to implement the order. General assurances are not enough. Reports published via the court are an essential element of accountability. I should address the question of self-defence. In its advisory opinion in the wall case, the court noted that the threat that Israel had argued justified the construction of the wall was not imputable to a foreign state but emanated from territory, the occupied Palestinian territory over which Israel itself exercises control. For those reasons, the court decided, as a matter of international law, the right of self-defence under Article 51 of the Charter, the UN Charter, had no relevance in such circumstances. Twenty days ago, the Security Council affirmed yet again that Gaza is occupied territory. Though Israel refers to a complete withdrawal from Gaza, it has retained control over Gaza, over access by land and sea and air, and over key governmental functions and supplies of water and electricity. The tightness of its grip may have varied, but no one can doubt the continuous reality of Israel's grip on Gaza. The court's legal holding from 2004 holds good, and a similar point is to be made here. What Israel is doing in Gaza, it is doing in territory under its own control. Its actions are enforcing its occupation. The law on self-defence under Article 51 of the UN Charter has no application. But that is not the main point. The main point is much simpler. It is that, no matter how monstrous or appalling an attack or provocation, genocide is never a permitted response. Every use of force, whether used in self-defence or in enforcing an occupation or in policing operations or otherwise, must stay within the limits set by international law, including the explicit duty in Article One of the convention to prevent genocide. South Africa believes that the publicly available evidence of the scale of the destruction resulting from the bombardment of Gaza and the deliberate restriction of food, water, medicines, and electricity available to the population of Gaza demonstrates that the government of Israel, not Jewish people or Israeli citizens, the government of Israel and its military is intent on destroying the Palestinians in Gaza as a group and is doing nothing to prevent or punish the actions of others who support that aim. And I repeat, the point is not simply that Israel is acting disproportionately. The point is that the prohibition on genocide is an absolute, a peremptory rule of law. Nothing can ever justify genocide. No matter what some individuals within the group of Palestinians in Gaza may have done, and no matter how great the threat to Israeli citizens might be, genocidal attacks on the whole of Gaza and the whole of its population with the intent of destroying them cannot be justified. And no exception can be made in a provisional measures order to allow a state to engage in actions that are capable of violating its obligations under the Genocide Convention. It is unthinkable that a court would ever do such a thing. That is the simple point in this case. Genocide can never be justified in any circumstances. Israel's actions will be examined closely and methodically at the merits stage when the court will want to hear what Israel has to say in its defence. What matters now is that the evidence indicates that Israel's actions have violated its obligations under the Genocide Convention, that they continue to violate them, and that Israel has asserted that it intends to continue them. Israel may say that it will comply with all of its obligations under the Genocide Convention and that orders from the court are not necessary. But in previous cases, the court has held that such unilateral statements do not remove the risk of irreparable prejudice or obviate the need for a court order. In this case, one reason for doubting the efficacy of any such unilateral undertaking is Israel's apparent inability to see that it has done anything wrong in grinding Gaza and its people into the dust. Another reason is that a departure from or reinterpretation of any unilateral undertaking by Israel may lead to consequences so appalling that the risk simply cannot be taken. But there is a third reason. As was noted during the submissions to this court in the case concerning the reservations to the Genocide Convention in 1951, quote, "The obligation to submit disputes concerning the interpretation or execution of the convention to the International Court of Justice was regarded as one of the prime guarantees of the due fulfillment of the basic obligation to prevent and punish the crime of genocide," end quote. The role of the court, which unusually extends not only to the interpretation and application of the convention, but also to its fulfillment, is pivotal. In addition to their substantive obligations under the convention, it is vitally important that they respect the court and their procedural obligations. This is not a moment for the court to sit back and be silent. It's necessary that it assert its authority and itself order compliance with the obligations under the Genocide Convention. Indeed, it's hard to think of a case in recent history which has been so important for the future of international law and of this court. Madam President, Members of the Court, that concludes my submission. I thank you for your attention, and unless I can help you further, I'd ask that you call on South Africa's agent to read out the request for relief.
I thank Professor Lowe, and I now invite the agent of South Africa, His Excellency, Mr Wusumuzi Madoncela, to address the court. You have the floor, Excellency.
Madam President, it remains my honour to read to your excellencies the provisional measures that South Africa requests from the court. You have heard the reasons set out which justify the measures being sought. To sum up, the indication of provisional measures is, we recognise, without prejudice to the merits of the underlying claim. Yet, the evidence at this stage indicates grave violence and genocidal acts against the Palestinians in Gaza and flagrant contravention of the Genocide Convention and in breach of their rights. South Africa has come to this court to prevent genocide and to do so in the discharge of the international obligation that rests on South Africa and all other states under the convention. The consequences of not indicating clear and particularized specific provisional measures and not taking steps to intervene while Israel disregards its international obligations before our eyes would... would, we fear, be very grave indeed for the Palestinians in Gaza, who remain at real risk of further genocidal acts, for the integrity of the Convention, for the rights of South Africa, and for the reputation of this court, which is equipped with and must exercise its powers to afford an effective realization of the rights under the Convention. That means we respectfully submit indicating the provisional measures being sought by South Africa, as well as any others in addition which the court might deem appropriate. Justice and equal respect for the rights of Palestinians points overwhelmingly in favor of these critically required provisional measures. Madam President, I now proceed to read the measures requested by South Africa. On the basis of the facts set forth above, South Africa, as a state party to the Convention on the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide, respectfully request the court, as a matter of extreme agency, pending the course determination of this case on the merits, to indicate the following provisional measures in relation to the Palestinian people as a group protected by the Genocide Convention. These measures are directly linked to the rights that form the subject matter of South Africa's disputes with Israel. One, the state of Israel shall immediately suspend its military operations in and against Gaza. Two, the state of Israel shall ensure that any military or irregular armed units which may be directed, supported, or influenced by it, as well as any organizations and persons which may be subject to its control, direction, or influence, take no steps in furtherance of the military operations referred to in point one above. Three, the Republic of South Africa and the state of Israel shall each, in accordance with their obligations under the Convention on the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide in relation to the Palestinian people, take all reasonable measures within their power to prevent genocide. Four, the state of Israel shall, in accordance with its obligations under the Convention on the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide in relation to the Palestinian people as a group protected by the Convention on the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide, desist from the commission of any and all acts within the scope of Article two of the Convention. In particular, A, killing members of the group; B, causing serious bodily or mental harm to the members of the group; C, deliberately inflicting on the group conditions of life calculated to bring about its physical destruction in whole or in part; and D, imposing measures intended to prevent births within the group. Five, the state of Israel shall pursuant to point four, paragraph C above, in relation to Palestinians, desist from and take all measures within its power, including the rescinding of relevant orders of restrictions and or prohibitions to prevent, A, the expulsion and forced displacement from their homes; B, the deprivation of access to adequate food and water, access to humanitarian assistance, including access to adequate fuel, shelter, clothes, hygiene and sanitation; the medical supplies and assistance; and, C, the destruction of Palestinian life in Gaza. Number six, the state of Israel shall, in relation to Palestinians, ensure that its military, as well as any irregular armed units or individuals which may be directed, supported, or otherwise influenced by it, and any organizations and persons which may be subject to its control, direction, or influence, do not commit any acts described in four and five above or engage in direct and public incitement to commit genocide, conspiracy to commit genocide, attempt to commit genocide, or complicity in genocide and in so far as they do engage therein that steps are taken towards their punishment pursuant to Articles one, two, three, and four of the Convention on the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide. Number seven, the state of Israel shall take effective measures to prevent the destruction and ensure the preservation of evidence related to allegations of acts within the scope of Article two of the Convention on the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide. To that end, the states of Israel shall not act to deny or otherwise restrict access by fact-finding missions, international mandates, and other bodies to Gaza to assist in ensuring the preservation and retention of said evidence. Number eight, the state of Israel shall submit a report to the court on all measures taken to give effect to this order within one week as from the date of this order and thereafter at such regular intervals as the court shall order until a final decision on the case is rendered by the court and that such reports shall be published by the court, a bigger party. Number nine, the state of Israel shall refrain from any action and shall ensure that no action is taken which might aggravate or extend the disputes before the court or make it more difficult to resolve. Thank you, Madam President and distinguished members of the court. That concludes South Africa's address. Thank you.
I thank the agent of South Africa, whose statement brings to an end the single round of oral argument of South Africa, as well as this morning's sitting. The court will meet again tomorrow, twelve January twenty twenty-four, at ten a.m., to hear the single round of oral argument of Israel. The sitting is adjourned.